And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic sleeve on the wall in the back. Before we get started, I will ask Chairman Soule, please stand and lead us into place.
I plead to lead. The citizens of the United States of America, in the republic which stands on a nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
First up, I have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas Waterville, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States, whereas 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local economy by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it's important for people to support the small businesses they value in their community, whereas Waterville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now I do. Now, I, Nick Isgro, Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Waterville proclaim November 25th, 2017, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support the small businesses and merchants on this Saturday and those throughout the year. And is there anybody here to take this tonight, Mike?
I don't think so.
Next up is Community Notes. Community Notes is a time if anybody has something they would like to say, an announcement or speak about, questions or comments, that's not currently on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. We just ask you to come to the podium, state your name and where you live and what you have to say.
I'm Scott Mackin. I'm here with the Waterville Community Land Trust Board of Directors. The secretary, just like to kind of give you guys, we've been trying to, hopefully we'll do this every few months, it's been a while, so kind of give you an update of what's been going on with the land trust. As you, some of you may know, may not know, that 223 Water Street has been torn down, and the land trust, hopefully in the next few weeks or so, will be actually taking ownership of the land with plans to develop, hopefully in the spring, early spring, we're looking to put like a nice little park at Park, little seating area. If you guys haven't had, if any of you haven't had a chance to go down with Erin Look, it's beautiful, it overlooks the Kennebec River, there's actually access to the water. We've also purchased the property adjoining it, 226 Water Street. Hopefully, we're looking, early next week, the three buildings on those properties will be torn down with, again, future development plans in the spring to kind of develop, we don't know what we're going to do with it, but it will be developed in either park or a nice usable area. We've, we're also glad to announce that we have received a grant that is actually going to administer it over the next, we get so much this year, we're actually getting so much next year, which actually helped us purchase 226, and will actually help us in the future with the future projects we're looking to work on. We've actually, last time I was here, we were telling you that we were in the process of hiring a part-time employee. We have actually hired our part-time employee. We're glad to have on board Meg Bernier Boyd, who is our new part-time employee, who helped us with different development administrative stuff behind the scenes that some of us can't get to. 181 Water Street is actually still on the market. If you know anybody who's interested, low-income, first home time buyer that would actually qualify for a house, we ask that you please contact Jill Hewitt at Century 21 Surratt Realtor. She can work and give you the information, the application criteria, what you need to fit, to hopefully fit a house. Also, just let everybody know that our monthly meetings are actually open to the public. If anybody would like to come to one of our monthly meetings, the next one is December 10th at 4:00 PM at 181 Water Street. Unless it gets sold, then we'll have to pick another place, but right now, again, November, uh, November, December 10th, 4:00 PM, 181 Water, like I said, anybody is welcome to come and sit on the meetings and just, you know, get a better in-depth of what, about the land trust and what we're, what we're currently working on, and working with the city to promote homeownership and make this a nice, vibrant, better place to live. Any questions, comments?
Todd, I didn't have you come up next. I saw you were ready with something prepared for us.
I brought props.
Todd Martin Ward 6, how are you all doing? Exhausted, I'm sure, from yesterday. So this Saturday, we'll celebrate Veterans Day, a lot of the men and women that fought for this country and made the ultimate sacrifice. I live just around the corner from Veterans Memorial Park here in Waterville, on Sheldon Place, and it's a place that I spent a lot of time in, during the warmer months especially. Last week, I grabbed a trash bag and some rubber gloves, and I went and cleaned up Veterans Memorial Park. I'd noticed there had been some food wrappers, some styrofoam cups, and plastic bags kind of floating around, so I put on my gloves, I grabbed a couple trash bags, and I cleaned up the park. And I found two trash bags full of trash, styrofoam cups, plastic shopping bags, plastic straws, alcohol bottles, beer cans, it was pretty disgusting. You know, I love this country and I love this city. To me, it's the ultimate disrespect to our country and our veterans to litter a park that honors veterans. You know, I found plastic shopping bags literally on the veterans monument, literally hanging around the cannon that's in that monument, in that park. It was unsightly to see, and it was especially frustrating since it was a park to honor our veterans. The next day, I grabbed some more trash bags, some more rubber gloves, and I cleaned up the head of Falls and the Two Cents Bridge area. I found about 70 single-use plastic shopping bags lining the fence posts in the trees, kind of in the roots of the trees. A lot of them had been mowed over, and so they were in hundreds of little pieces, making them more difficult to pick up, and more likely they're actually going to end up in the river and then eventually the ocean. And then on Halloween, myself and some volunteers, many who are here, Scott, Stu, and Alan, and I, and a few others, we helped clean up North Street between the Alphon Center and Corey Road, and we found about 40 plastic shopping bags along with seven other bags full of trash that day. Thanks to Matt Skeahan and Public Works for picking up that trash for free from us, that was nice. You know, this all needs to change. Plastic shopping bags are ubiquitous in our environment. They were introduced in the 1970s, and they're now widespread, but it didn't used to always be that way. You used to get paper bags at the grocery store, well before I was alive. According to the EPA, the average American uses 150 single-use plastic shopping bags every year. That's a very conservative estimate to me, but we'll go with it. So, there's 150 bags per person, there's 16,000 people that live in Waterville, that's 2,400,000 plastic bags used in Waterville every single year. That means in Maine, there's almost 2 billion used every single year. Globally, it's estimated there's a trillion used every single year. But let's just focus on Waterville, something that we can control. And now, a plastic bag is about a foot across. If you put all of those plastic bags used in Waterville next to each other, 2,400 plastic bags next to each other, that's 8,000 football fields. So just imagine 8,000 football fields lined with plastic bags all the way across. That's just for Waterville, every single year. Now, let's assume that half of those bags, so about 1,200,000, came from Hannaford's, you know, the most popular grocery store in town. According to the Hannafords on KMD, they pay $32 for a box of 2,000 plastic bags. So that means that each Hannaford in Waterville is paying approximately $19,000, $19,200 on giveaway plastic shopping bags every single year. And that's just for Hannaford. So that's $40,000 for both locations, and that's pretty expensive for them just to give away for free. This past legislative session, there was actually a bill that passed in Augusta, LD57, that would have encouraged Maine towns to pass local ordinances to address plastic shopping bags in styrofoam takeout containers. The bill passed the House and the Senate, but the governor vetoed the bill. The bill would have set a goal of 20 towns passing ordinances on plastic bags and reusable, excuse me, styrofoam containers by the year 2019, but again, that bill was vetoed and did not go into law. The Sustained Maine Coalition and our Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle Team is working on an ordinance to bring forward to the city council. That would do the following. It would prohibit the use of plastic shopping bags at businesses in Waterville where food sales make up 2% of their total sales. So this wouldn't apply to every single business in Waterville, it would apply to businesses where food sales make up 2% or more of their sales. So grocery stores, convenience stores, cafes and restaurants. Home Depot, Staples, clothing retailers wouldn't be affected. And this does not apply to the plastic produce, meat, or fish bags that you would use in the grocery store, it would only apply to the bags you get at checkout. The city code enforcement officer would be responsible for enforcing this law. Two, we're not proposing any changes to paper bags. Paper bags grow on trees, literally, so they are renewable, they're not made from oil, and so we are not proposing any changes on paper bags. We think it's better to support the forest products industry than the oil industry. All told, there's 140 different places in the United States with a ban or a fee on plastic bags. California, Hawaii have banned them completely, Chicago, Washington DC have banned them as well. Many provinces in Canada, including Quebec, Nova Scotia, and Manitoba have cracked down them as, cracked down on them as well. Here in Maine, there's 12 towns that have an ordinance on plastic bags. Bath, York, Freeport, Brunswick, Kennebunk, Saco, and Belfast have all banned plastic shopping bags in their town across all businesses. Portland, South Portland, Topsum, and Falmouth have implemented a 5 cent fee per bag on plastic shopping bags in their town. And in my professional job at the Natural Resources Council of Maine, I've worked with several people in those towns to pass those ordinances, so I have a lot of experience doing this work. This ordinance would encourage folks to bring their reusable bags to the grocery store. I wrote six pages of testimony, and I am completely lost, and I apologize. So this ordinance that we're proposing is just a starting point, this is definitely not final. We're going to be doing a lot of work to get input from you all, from residents of this town, and from business owners especially, how they feel, would feel about this and how it would impact them. Our plan is to get feedback from the community and propose an ordinance sometime early next year to bring forward to this committee. At that point, you could either pass the ordinance outright, which was done by the city councils in the towns of Bath, Saco, Portland, South Portland, York, Falmouth, Brunswick, and Belfast, or you could send it to the voters to decide, which happened in Freeport, Kennebunk, and Topsum, and voters passed them in all of those towns by a pretty big margin. Yesterday at the polls, we had a table talking to voters about this idea, and we were really blown away by the enthusiasm that we received. About 75% of the people I talked to were completely for it, 20% had no opinion, and 5% were opposed. We collected 300 signatures in our petition that said that I support banning plastic shopping bags in Waterville, which was way more than we expected to get. In the coming months, we're going to do some events to educate the public about plastic bags, do some film screenings of documentaries, have a community events to learn more, we're going to go to as many businesses as we can to talk to folks about it as well. So, I can talk to you all day about the environmental impacts of plastic shopping bags. The plastic patch in the Pacific Ocean between Hawaii and Japan is the size of Texas, it's full of plastic, that's plastic bags, straws, et cetera. But look at it this way, as our city continues to be revitalized, as businesses continue to relocate to our town, as Colby continues to pour money into our downtown, we need to think about how a clean community, clean streets, clean parks, clean trails can contribute to that revitalization. It's, you know, clean cities attract more people than dirty cities, and we need to be serious about this. And again, this is just in the very, very early stages, we want to get feedback from everybody, so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I just appreciate the way that you guys are going about this and actually taking on kind of a lengthy process of education and engaging the community to get feedback first and talking to the businesses. We don't always see that, and I have an appreciation for the process that you're undertaking.
Thank you. One thing, final thing that I'll note, we gave away about 300 free reusable shopping bags at the polls yesterday, we still have about 100 left, so if anybody here, anybody watching on TV, needs a free reusable shopping bag, they have the Sustained Maine logo on it, which is pretty cool. Yes.
Todd, can I just say for the record, you know, so that people will understand, because this happens sometimes, that we are not proposing this now, right?
No, we're not proposing this now, this is to update you on our committee's work.
Because sometimes people get fired up thinking, you know, that something's going to happen, just because the idea has been introduced, and I really like, you know, that you have the concept of perhaps bringing it to the people, you know, to let them decide, because I think that's the way to go.
Sure, and that's completely up to this city council. Again, you could either pass the ordinance that we propose, or let the voters decide which has happened in other towns. And our next meeting is this Monday, I'm here, it's at City Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and anybody in the public is welcome to join us if they support our effort.
I just had a question, and as you're moving along, maybe you can discuss it amongst your group and get some feedback, but mine is more or less hits more home than most, but there are some people in this community that have immune system disorders or deficiencies that when using reusable bags, they actually can't, because there's no way to completely sanitize the bags. Is there any sanitized option, I guess, for reusable bags, and if there are not, what do you propose? I mean, if you, is it, is it paper bags, is it, you know, I guess the question is, is it going to be more a cost burden to those folks as opposed to having another option on the table?
Sure.
I mean, I'm just giving it to you as a concern that I see right now, and I'm hoping maybe we can get some ideas on the table.
Absolutely. As we said, we're not proposing anything on paper bags, they'd still be free for people to use at checkout, as they are today. You know, I wash my reusable bags probably less often than I should, but you know, there are contamination issues with bags that you use over and over again, and you're putting meat and other, you know, contaminating items in there. So you can wash your reusable bags, they're pretty sturdy, cloth bags are the best ones to use, but yeah, paper is going to be available, so hopefully that shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue.
I mean, honestly, I'd like to hear, you know, if you can get like a statement or something from some of the businesses that you're approaching, I mean, clearly we're targeting certain businesses. I mean, if you're 2% more of food sales, I can probably name on one hand how many stores that means.
Right.
I'd like to hear from them, and hear what their thoughts are. I mean, are they going to jump ship and move to Fairfield? You know, I mean, these are questions that I know will be asked of me, and one that I probably should understand and think before.
Absolutely, yeah, and you know, Waterville has many of the same businesses that exist in other towns that have these bans. You know, Hannafords in Portland gave out 10,000 free reusable bags before this went into place. So there, these, many companies here in Waterville have experience dealing with this in Maine and around the country. And also just to say that I have connections to public works directors, code enforcement officers in these towns that have already enacted these proposals, and I'm happy to bring them in front of this council to answer any of your questions, because they're actually living and experiencing it.
Had your group considered possibly reducing the number of bags as opposed to outright banning them?
We have, yeah. So as I said, some towns in Maine have charged a fee on bags. Our committee didn't like that idea because it would be viewed as a tax, another tax on the people, and banning would actually get the job done, I think, and would actually reduce plastic pollution more. There's lots of options on the table, we're open to feedback, and we want to hear that feedback as we draft the ordinance. And we are going to start with an ordinance that already passed in other town, because the language is already written, but we do want to make it specific to Waterville and incorporate feedback. Yes.
Isn't it true too that one of the big stores in Waterville has already introduced this concept?
Yes. Save-A-Lot, right here on the concourse, does not give away plastic shopping bags, they encourage you to use the boxes that the food comes into the store, which is pretty cool, and Toby Rose, I think is his name, the owner of Save-A-Lot, he's actually on our committee and is excited about this idea. And I just learned last weekend when I was dropping things off to Goodwill, they're going to stop giving away plastic bags at checkout starting January 1, and so they're saving all, they're saving plastic bags that come into them so that they can give them away for free to people, so they can continue to recycle them, so they're not going to be giving out any new ones, which is pretty cool.
Is there a question from the audience?
I have a quick question. Have you taken into account the net value, because I use plastic shopping bags, but I don't buy plastic bin liners, I don't buy sanitary bags for the bins in the bathroom, I don't buy plastic bags to bag the dog waste up in the yard, so I buy no other plastic products, so in sets I recycle them. Now, if I buy this wash bag, I'm now buying five other plastic items to put in the house. And second, it's not just immune systems that can be issues with recycled bags at grocery shop, it's anyone with severe food allergies touching certain products. So yes, I'll save down on my plastic bag use, but I will then now be buying plastic garbage bags and plastic bin liners. What's the real net savings to this? I think it's...
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, Julian. I use these bags as well, they're actually pretty handy. I use them for my cat litter, that's the thing I heard probably 100 times yesterday, what am I going to do with my cat litter? Diapers. Yeah, Nick is more worried about diapers.
It's like the cat that remains as I...
Don't let my cats hear that, all right? That's a great question. You know, there are alternatives out there, we're not proposing to do anything with the produce and meat bags that you get at the store, those work perfectly well. If you happen to be shopping in any other town in this area, you'll get a plastic bag, so we obviously don't want to drive any business out of town, but they, they'll be everywhere. It's, you know, this is one very small step that we can make and take action at the local level, but you know, there are going to be plastic bags everywhere, and you'll find them.
My only thought would just be, you know, if there is an increase in price for the businesses for providing the paper bags, just, you know, what does that look like? Are they going to incur more expenses?
Yeah.
I know that people can't use reusable bags, but probably if you're doing it, instead they'll, you know, just use what's available, so it's going to be fine.
And probably does that get passed on to the consumers who are having to use paper bags?
And something like this has been phased in in every other town that's been passed, so this doesn't happen January 1 of a year. It can get phased in, and people can be reminded so that it doesn't happen all at once. But I'd also, that's a really good point, I'd like to get numbers from Hannafords and others about how many paper bags they purchase, how much those cost, and compare it to the plastic, because I was actually pretty shocked that these bags were as expensive as they are. I mean, Hannaford paying $32 for 2,000 of them, they probably go through 2,000 plastic bags in less than an hour. I mean, so that's a lot of money for Hannafords to be spending giving these out.
But if that's the case, and they would, they would have a savings, then why wouldn't they just do it themselves, and why would the government have to step in and say that you can't take those bags? Is my question.
It's obviously cheaper than paper.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, I don't know, I mean, I guess if, if you said there's already stores doing it, why don't we encourage them to do it as opposed to imposing a regulation on them to do that? My fundamental view on how to handle that, as opposed to...
Yeah, I'll ask him next time I'm in there.
Plastic bags are nuisance and need to be taken, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, and after this, I kind of want to move on, because this is Community Notes, and it's not really...
Who thought this would be so controversial, guys?
I know you were just trying to tell us that something was coming up, so we thank you, and I'm sure we'll hear more.
Thank you very much.
Next, Todd.
Hello, Julian Payne, Ward 5. I just wanted to publicly thank the residents of Ward 5 for giving me a vote of confidence. I feel very at home in that ward. I very much enjoy the demographics of Ward 5, and a big thank you to my counselor, Nick Champagne, for his advice and support. He's going to be a great example to me, to follow his footsteps of what a great elected official is, and I'm going to look to you for advice and guidance. And it was really, really neat to see the American election process work in such a positive way, just, you know, it's what's great about America, to see people turning out and voting that way. And in these, you know, times, it can be uncivil. I was very proud of my opponent, and I won't call her an opponent, but the person that ran with me, Mary Ellen. We both conducted ourselves in a very civil way with respect and dignity, and that's the most important thing, I think, about the campaign. And I'm delighted that our mayor can live to fight another day, and this doesn't mean I failed the Democrat meter test by saying this, because he was obviously endorsed by numerous Democrats. The voice of the people was heard, and Waterville chose to endorse a candidate that has some momentum. And I will dispel any rumors that the British interfered in my election in any way, or Belgrade. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for Community Notes?
Uh, Nick, if I may?
You may.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank all the election staff and everyone that helped with Election Day. I think it went very, very well at our new location at Thomas College. In particular, I thank Dave Higgins, the janitor there at City Hall, Sarah Cross, my eagle watch assistant, the folks that helped with absentee voting, Laurlee, Julie, Katie, and Arlie, all was a huge help, Joel and Joy and Hallie, the warden at Home Place, and Ms. Ward Clark. Parks and Rec did a great job setting up, it was a lot of logistics with the new location. We also had Thomas College volunteer students that did community service and helped us out of voter registration yesterday. Volunteers from High Hope's Clubhouse helped in the parking area. And I would thank everyone at Thomas College, I think we're building a really good partnership there, the staff, the students, the security, everyone. The president came in, visited for a while, I think it's going to be a great partnership, so I look forward to many successful elections there.
And how about a round of applause for Patty? Next, we will have the disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anybody on the city council who feels they have a conflict of interest with any of the votes they could be taking tonight? If you know. Next, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Unfinished business, order 161, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for approval of four for sure.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Soule?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Orders seven in favor and zero votes.
Next is order 162, 2017.
Move to read by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for Salem City property, Gilman Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Soule?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Orders seven in favor and zero votes.
Along with new business resolution 164, 2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
A resolution providing for contract renewals for dispatch services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion. I'll just make a note for those in the audience, basically, I don't know, Mike, if you want to take it, but let's say we got a 3% increase that we're imposing on other new contracts.
Right, the last time we had an increase was three years ago.
The last time we had an increase was three years ago, 2014. Since then, you know, we've added a new communication tower at the police department. Obviously, some other operational costs have gone up, salaries and other things. Oh, actually, we replaced a lot of radios. So I think the 3% increase to our six or seven member towns is quite reasonable. And that would be the only increase for the next three years, because these are three-year contracts.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Next, resolution 165217.
A resolution providing for issuance of an innkeeper's license to Jody Langlois doing business at Sheikery. Be resolved by the wonderful city council acting as municipal officers that the city council hereby authorize the issuance of an innkeeper's license to Jody Langlois doing business at Sheikery, 45 Water Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Make a motion that we, resolution 166, 67, and 68, we all read by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor? Resolution 166, 217.
A resolution providing for issuance of a liquor license to Jody Langlois doing business at Sheikery.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Resolution 167, 217.
A resolution providing for issuance of a vixxers license to Jody Langlois doing business at Sheikery.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Resolution 168, 217.
A resolution providing for issuance of a special amusement license to Jody Langlois doing business at Sheikery.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
I would just make note that she is here.
Is it a new owner?
Yes.
We just wanted to make this as easy as possible for you.
Did you want to say anything, Julian?
Nope, I just want to say anything. I'm going to get on with the rest of it.
Get on with it.
Great, thank you. Next, resolution 169, 217.
A resolution providing for referral to the planning board. Be it resolved by the wonderful city council acting as municipal officers that in accordance with Article Section, Section 7 dot 1 of the zoning ordinance, a proposal to amend the zoning map is hereby referred to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I guess it's my turn. I have a few items under the management report. First is that tomorrow morning, we go back in the negotiations with one of our unions. So we meet tomorrow morning. And next Tuesday, Monday, Monday, in the afternoon of the second union. Because we have two contracts that we're trying to negotiate. Both of them expire June 30. So we're far along in the year. But what we've been waiting for is the announcement on our health insurance increase because you know that's been one of the negotiating points. So that announcement has come out, so we'll be meeting tomorrow morning and Friday. Probably at your, no, not probably, definitely at your next meeting, which is the 21st of November, we'd be reporting back on negotiations. No questions on that? The Riverwalk project, the bids are coming in, and we're going to be reviewing those. And so I think probably also at your next meeting, the 21st, we'll have something to report back to you. One of the things that we've done just recently is in the main hall at City Hall, there's a monitor that's been installed. So when you come into City Hall and you're over near the finance office to do your car registration, get your license, whatever, you'll see up above the doorway is a TV monitor with a scrolling video that is about the Riverwalk and a lot of other municipal and community events. We don't have all those items on that continuous run yet, but that's what we're going to work on. So I think it'll be a good public information tool for people visiting City Hall. Next, Monday night is a hearing on the Trachten Road. And that hearing is required for the reconstruction of the road. So it has nothing to do with the interchange. Well, it does have something to do with the interchange. But the hearing is about the fact that the road has to be rebuilt. And it's a state project that we're going to contribute to. And so the state is required to hold a hearing, which will explain how the road will be widened, rebuilt in some areas. I think some of the elevation dips will be, they'll try and level some of those out. So it's a public hearing to talk about the engineering for the recent structure.
Clear, this is just Trachten Road, right?
Just Trachten.
Just Trachten.
Just Trachten.
Just Trachten.
Just Trachten.
I just wanted to drive that home, like...
I'll be there also Monday night. It's, oh, shoot. I believe it's at 5:30, but I will send you all a notice of the exact time. I'll make sure the newspaper gets it also. I'm sure we'll have questions about speed.
Where will it be? Where is the meeting? Here? Didn't Todd just say that they're having their meeting here next Monday?
He did say that. But I don't know if he meant right.
Yeah, it's not up here, it's in City Hall.
They meet in the City Hall. Yeah, downstairs. Questions?
Does it affect all of the traffic in the road? Like the middle road down to West River Road?
No, it's from interchange to West River.
Okay.
Yep, nothing west of the interchange. Any questions on that? Tomorrow afternoon, we travel down to Augusta to meet with DOT, you know, regarding the question of two-way traffic on Main Street, Main Street and Front Street. It's just a beginning discussion about the process. Should the city, Colby, the state all remain serious about looking further into two-way traffic? This is a beginning discussion of the process. So I'll report back about what the steps might be if we're committed to pursuing them. Last item tomorrow, unfortunately, is Amanda's last day in my office. So if you get a chance to stop by and wish her luck, or give her a ring, send her an email. She's been a great part of our crew. We're going to miss her. But we're happy she's got another opportunity in her career. So it's a good thing for her, not so good for us.
Motion to adjourn.